All right. Judging by the video and audio, I believe we're live. So I want to welcome everybody to the 9:00 AM, March 19, 2019, City Council Meeting for the City of Hutchinson. Linda, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Here.
Dabline?
Yes, here.
Solner?
Here.
Pyros DiCarvalo?
Here.
Inskey?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the prayer. And I believe Pastor Darrell Peterson's going to do that for us today. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you, Father God, for the beautiful weather that we've had. And Father, we just thank you that there's more to come. And Father, we continue to pray for the city, that, Father, that our obligation is to pray for those that are in leadership over us. Father, I thank you that, as we pray, that, Father God, people will listen. But, Father, they'll listen to their heart. And, Father, they move by their heart, they make decisions by their heart. And, Father, we just thank you that that will help this city to become what it should be. We thank you, Lord God, that, Father, you've given everybody the ability to reason, think, and do things. But, Father God, you created this whole universe, and it's still running and flowing, just like you created it. And, Father, this city needs help. And, Father, we just pray that it gets the help that it needs, and that we become doing what needs to be done in this city, and make it better, and better, and more productive. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Darrell. Next item?
Item 4A, a proclamation for Kick Butts Day.
If I could have those with communities that care, join me at the podium over here, please. Thank you.
Taking the pineapples.
Welcome. And for the record, this is my first proclamation. So if I goof it up, they promised me the longest word was proclamation, so hopefully that'll go easy on me. Whereas, March 20, 2019, has been designated National Kick Butts Day, calling on all Americans to show their support for tobacco-free kids, embracing this opportunity to have meaningful conversation with underage youth who are contemplating life-changing decisions. And whereas, the Hutchinson City Council members value the health and safety of all our citizens, and our community has much to celebrate and more work to do to help citizens live healthy lifestyle that affords them and their families long life and health. And whereas, smoking kills more people than alcohol, AIDS, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined, with thousands more dying from spit tobacco use. And whereas, success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to tobacco education and prevention are imperative. And tobacco abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children. And whereas, the goal of Kick Butts Day is to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent underage smoking and tobacco use. And whereas, the Kick Butts Day campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, tobacco-free lifestyles, and encouraging those who use tobacco to plan for cessation. Now, therefore, I, David A. Inskey, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March 20, 2019, as Kick Butts Day. Thank you so much. Thank you. And is there anybody that would like to say a few words? Please, by all means.
So, thank you for the proclamation, and we think it is important to spread education to parents and children about tobacco and nicotine. And we want to think the gener-- we want our-- the next generation to be the last people to die from tobacco.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did they need a picture with you in the proclamation?
First proclamation. Do we need a picture?
Yes, yes.
Sorry. How are you goofing off? Sorry about that.
You pulled somebody out of a science test, so we're in a hurry.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. I knew I messed that up.
No, you didn't. You didn't. They just usually ask for a picture.
Very good. Next item, please.
Item 5, oral communications from the audience.
Very good. This is the portion of the meeting where we allow those from the audience to speak to the council. We ask that it be items that are not currently on the agenda, that you also limit your remarks to five minutes. I know quite a few of you are here to discuss property issues, and if I could ask you to indulge me, I'm going to ask if there's anybody here who's not on that matter first, because I know there's more than a few of you that would like to speak, that would allow them to maybe get in and out if there's another issue. Is there anybody who wants to speak on an issue other than that that is not currently on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, I would invite whoever wants to speak on whatever matter. Ms. Greaver?
My name is Richard Greaver. I'm the president of the Central Kansas Landlords Association and on the Board of Directors of the Associated Landlords of Kansas. Hutchinson is the only city that allows inspectors to leave the public right-of-way and wander around homes and peek-in windows. The United States Supreme Court ruled in Michigan versus Tyler and Carrera versus Municipal Court that city officials and officials must stay on the public right-of-way unless they have a warrant. Why are you violating the rulings of the United States Supreme Court? You're allowing inspectors to leave the right-of-way, peek-in windows where our mothers, wives, daughters, granddaughters might be undressing. One inspector was in the yard and looking in the windows of one of my female, single tenants, scared the bejabbers out of her. I tried to get her to file charges under the breach of privacy, which is the peeping tom statute, but she refused, saying, "He knows where I live." Then she reminded me that there was another inspector that wandered around, peeked in windows. You know his name, Dennis Rader. We don't want any possible Dennis Rader, a rapist, a child molester, or a thief allowed to enter our yards.
Okay. I'm going to stop you right there. We are not going to imply at all that our city staff, who work hard every day to make this place run and provide valuable amenities, are rapists, are murderers. That is not going down. I don't care who implied it. It's wrong. You're saying it in a public forum. It's sickening. I want it to stop. If you have something to say that is going to be productive and valuable to the conversation, do, but we're not attacking city staff like that.
Get this department under control and force them to stay in the public right-of-way unless they have a warrant or a signed valid complaint from the legal occupant of the property. They're also obtaining entry by false pretense. They told a tenant they needed to inspect the smoke alarms, and the tenant let them in. This was a-- not a complaint or a warrant. I am told there are other instances of false pretense entry by our city inspectors.
Jade, thank you for taking care of that. And let's not try and name-call or accuse. No crimes of that sort of nature should be implied or have been committed. So, thank you for stepping up to that. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this matter or any other?
I will.
Please. If you will approach the podium, give your name and address as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Robin Jackson. I reside here in Hutchinson at 3805 Quavira. Excuse me, I do have a couple of remarks. I would like to thank you for taking time to let me address you this morning. In reference to the Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, it is a guarantee-- excuse me-- of property rights and privacy. And in order to uphold these principles, our own Kansas legislature passed-- excuse me-- a bill in 2016 that did show the intent to prevent rental inspection programs that transgress and trespass. Now, the final action of that was Senate Bill 366, and it did prevent inspections without permission. Excuse me.
You're fine.
I've been a little under the weather.
It's going around. Your fine thing.
Now, I'm convinced that this council's original intent with the ordinance and property code maintenance and so on is to prevent squalor of living conditions. And that's certainly something that I heartily endorse. However, I think perhaps, in due to the prototype that was presented to the city and is still up on your city website as a PowerPoint, this council may have erroneously assumed that most rental offerings in the City of Hutchinson are substandard. But I submit to you, that's not the case. But the outcome's still the same, that we have landlords and tenants that are being subjected to unreasonable searches in clear violation of the Fourth Amendment. I do have three points that I would like to highlight. Tenants are upset by inspector encroachment without permission and therefore unhappy with landlords. I maintain from the beginning that all this began, that at the very least, we would have unhappy tenants, and that, in fact, there may be some legal-- some legal obligation on the parts of landlords in order to protect tenants. There have been some assumptions made in the law that if one doesn't complain, that things may be assumed, such as easements and permissions. So, right here and now in public, I would like to go on record as saying, I give no permission for any inspector to go on my property. I publicly oppose that, and I want to say this because I want my tenants to enjoy the full protection of their Fourth Amendment rights. The second thing, the latest trend in property inspections appears to be the existence of anti-siphon valves, and I am wondering why that's being applied only to tenant-occupied homes. It would seem the purpose of anti-siphon valves is a contamination issue, and that would be a present problem regardless of who owns or occupies property. This is obvious discrimination against tenants and landlords because the plumbing code that's referenced in the City of Hutch ordinance does not make a distinction in residential property on codes if its owner occupied or tenant occupied. The International Plumbing Code has categories for residential, commercial, industrial, assembly, and so on. And so, to only pick on one type of residential, I believe is ranked discrimination. Why aren't all properties being grandfathered in for a code change, as has normally been the practice? Third point, in 2017, an inspector gained entrance into one of our homes, and according to my tenant, represented that they had no choice but to let them in. He wrote up a noncompliance on an electrical box and said, "There are problems, and we had to get a licensed electrical contractor," which we did, "who then wrote a letter to your city saying there was absolutely nothing wrong with it. We knew there wasn't. It was a relatively new box and so on." But the electrician's invoice was $150, and this was bogus. And I believe that you owe me that money. I don't think that's correct for me to have charges that I have to take care of because of inspection that-- well, the inspection's faulty, not the electrical box. I think basically, if I may close with this, that the fundamental question today, and what brings me forward as a citizen here, really goes far and away beyond anti-siphon valves and electrical boxes. What we're dealing with here is personal liberty and property rights, both of which are the foundation of this country. In fact, it makes our country unique among all the nations in the world. And I believe that, as elected officials, you have a responsibility to ensure that we have rights, not restrict our rights. The real question, I think, that we come up with is this: Are we going to have a government that's run by the people, as our founders intended, or is a government going to run the people? So, I respectfully ask you city commissioners to cease unlawful entrance and trespassing by city inspectors and discriminatory practices that appear to be the case in these inspections. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your words. Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak on the matter? Please.
Hi, my name's Frances Conklin. I live at 2609 Heather Parkway. I'm owner of All Seasons Storage, and I'm owner of All Seasons Rental Homes. I work on them myself. I manage them myself. Just want to talk about how I've been treated and how I've felt the last couple of months since you guys have waived the-- well, said that every house is going to be inspected. And this is just my perspective and how I feel in doing this. I've been doing rentals for 25 years, never had a problem with the city, never had a problem with an inspector, was always highly respected and respected them and everyone's job. I do not feel like that anymore. Excuse me. I was told the reason that we are all upset about your rules to inspect all the exteriors of rentals in 2019 was because of all the violations we were finding. Well, actually, it is because we are having our rights violated and being treated as pariahs, second-class citizens with no rights. After I complained about my rights being violated to John Deardoff, Trent Maxwell, and John Vedder, I had five of my homes inspected within a month, all with small amount of violations. Two of those had already been previously inspected and passed. We were supposed to have-- if you have it passed, that we'd have three years that you wouldn't inspect them again. That's gone. Every single rule that you had in place to protect us, you wiped out of that ordinance. Two of those violations were on electrical, were not violations. I hired an electrician to repair both of those violations, and I have those bills for you guys to pay. You voted to remove everything from our rental ordinance that protected our rights and those of our tenants. When this is adopted, it wasn't about retaliation, it wasn't about unfairness, disrespect, and looking to increase your numbers to prove yourself that this program was a success. Our tenants are calling us and are scared men are in their yards. They have called me. Some are so upset that they are going to the courthouse to file a complaint against us because we did not inform them that the city was looking at their windows. I heard this. My son-in-law is Travis Viera. He's a Reno County Sheriff Detective who is stationed at the courthouse. He told me that a lady came in, was very upset, was looking to who she can complain to because someone was looking in her windows, and she wanted to file a complaint against her landlord for not informing her that someone was coming to our house. You guys took away that right. We-- you guys took that out of the ordinance that you guys were supposed to inform us when you're coming. We have no rights. You come when you want, you do what you want, you look where you want. You're looking to see if windows are broken, you're looking to see everything around that, which means you are looking in windows, not you. You see what I'm saying? People are, and people are scared about that because they don't know when people are coming, which violates their rights, our rights, all of our rights. I was told by an inspector, very sarcastically, that we asked for this, that this is what we wanted, that we wanted our money's worth, and we wanted every one of our houses inspected this year. I have also been told that I need to hire in a better electrician, that he can look for problems in my houses that aren't problems. I was also told that if I took better care of my rentals, I could afford better insurance because then my house's roofs wouldn't get depreciated, and then I would have a full coverage on my roofs. I was told by that by a city inspector who was-- when I was telling him how rental property roofs are depreciated, and by the time we have a problem with it, we're not hardly getting any money about it. So he informed me that I'm just a pretty lousy landlord. I know I've fallen short on some of my rentals. I work on my houses myself with the help of my family on the weekend. I know I need new roofs, and I need to paint. Most of my places have new, anti-efficiency heating and air conditioning. All of my houses are safe, and everything is working in them. I don't need a city employee going around to all my houses telling me which ones I need to paint in the middle of winter. It's very, very disheartening to those of us investing in our community. We count on the city to respect us and to help us. Instead, the city is violating our rights and reveling in our demise. It really, really makes me afraid, for the first time, for the future of our city. I came to this city on a bus with one suitcase at 18 years old after spending most of my life in foster care. I am tougher than anyone would expect, and I will not back down. I will not ever be treated like I don't matter, because that is how I feel right now. It's sad to realize how I've touched the city is about what is not-- what is the problem, and our city is not moving forward. The level of accountability that you guys have perpetuated by allowing tenants to retaliate against us and make this-- it's really a mess. And our level on accountability in this city is at all-time highs. The saddest part of this, really, for me, is knowing that really, nobody cares, that our feelings and how you-- what you think about us is that we're just mad that we're getting caught because we have to paint, and that when we leave here, and that any time I've talked to a city inspector, I felt like after I've left, that I was being ridiculed, that I was being made fun of, and that they were just laughing at us, thinking, "We got these people. We got these bad guys." And that's how I feel. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. I have been really upset with this. I've been really upset how I've treated. I'm really-- it's-- anyway, it's very unfair, but thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on this or any other matter? Again, if you'll announce yourself and your thing, and limit your remarks to five minutes, if you would, please.
I reside at 512 East Avenue A here in Hutchinson. Have some papers. Can I step up and give these to you?
By all means.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you.
It's like I should've came up earlier. I do have rental property here in Hutchinson. Also, speaking to this matter with the inspections and that, I also kind of feel this is always-- has been an adversarial position here between inspectors and between the landlords, which don't-- I don't care to see and don't care to have. Hutchinson is a good community. If we all work together, I think we can get along. If you look at some of those pictures that I've put down there, I guess I want to say these are some examples of some things that have been sent out for violations. Some of them, if you'll look, I think the third page there has got the roof lines and some of those with the soffits and those types of things, very minor painting situations in my mind. But I'm just curious, if you're willing to, just take a quick glance at those. Do those look like violations that we really need to take care of, I guess?
I don't know if that was rhetorical or not, but--
Yeah.
And some of these appear to be, like you said, some--
Right.
--minor paint issues.
I'd say there's major and there's minor. I guess what I'm trying to look at is there, you know-- and you can't be painting in the middle of December and that, which I've been told by an inspector that, oh, paint anything above 40 degrees is good and it'll stick. If you want to waste your money and paint at 40 degrees, you go ahead, but it's not going to stick and that. But basically, the other thing is, those are not rental properties. Those are city-owned properties that you're looking at on those violations. There's-- as you see, there's electrical plugs hanging out. One of them's at a gazebo down by the pool. Of course, you're not going to be wet when you're down that way, and I guess, you know, if you're wet, stay away from electricity. The other one's over at Avenue A Plane Park, where the kids play, is in the gazebo, electrical plug sticking out. So, I mean, I think the city needs to look at some of their properties also before you go out and go around and start looking at a lot of other rental properties. I don't like the idea also that it's rental properties and not the city as a whole. I can walk down the street-- I mean, if I put backflow preventers on my faucets at my house, you're probably not going to come out and check because it's my residence. But yet, my rental, one block down, another one two blocks down, you're going to check those and make sure I have them on there. I'm kind of like them. It should be everybody or none at that point. Also, I said, I think they just need to go out, look at some of their-- your properties. Maybe you need to be doing that this spring before you go out and look at a lot of the tenants or the landlords' properties.
Very good.
Thank you for your time. Pass it on to your inspectors.
Very good. Sir? Apologize for keep reminding, but if you'll come address-- or, excuse me, give your name and address, and then limit your remarks to five minutes, please.
My name's Michael Jackson. I live at 3805 Quavira Drive here in Hutchinson, Kansas. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words today. I'm a property owner and a taxpayer in the City of Hutchinson. In addition to my personal residence, I own three rental properties. Our rental properties are in good neighborhoods and in good condition. I respectfully want to ask the city commissioners if you are aware and approve of inspection staff going onto private property without permission. Is this an initiative undertaken by the city employee on his own, or does he have a supervisor demanding this? Does the city manager and the city attorney approve of this? I have a right to know this because I'm a taxpayer, and I pay the salaries of all these people. Because I'm paying the bills in Hutchinson, Kansas, I want to ask you council members, were you serious about your oath of office to uphold the Constitution? Because this is a city that is ignoring the Fourth Amendment, if you council members do not intend to protect us taxpayers, then I would like to suggest that you step down and let people be elected that do support the Fourth Amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else? Mr. Graves?
First of all, one of the other landlords--
Again, if you'll--
Oh, I'm sorry. William Graves.
I felt like I was getting repetitive, so I--
I got so nervous last time I was up here, I tried to write some stuff down.
You're fine. If you'll announce yourself and your address.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak, first of all. Yeah, appreciate it. Open forum. I'm William Graves, 130 West 17th Avenue here in Hutchinson. I'm a property manager at Graves Enterprises. It's one of my jobs. And one of the things that we're being asked to do is put these little anti-siphon valves on or replace the entire fixture. And one of the other landlords has given me this one, and this is kind of what happens when you do that, even with the extra mile and kind of made a drainer there. So I'll let you guys pass that around if you'd like. So that was previously a fixture that would not have frozen or anything until-- but there's no way for the water to get out, even though he did kind of went the extra mile and put-- the pet cock on there to drain it, but it's the equivalent, but it, it didn't work, obviously. But anyway, that's, that's kind of the, some of the solutions that are being offered just aren't really, you know, appropriate or gonna, are gonna work. They end up in the spring, that's going to be turned on and flood my basement or something if that's in my property. Of course, even though I'm on the books of needing to do that to some of our places, I have chosen not to yet, hopefully that we can find some kind of simpler resolution about this. But I kind of wrote some stuff down so I could keep on track because I tend to wander. As I said previously, I'm a renter and also a property manager. You know, a lot of times we're called landlords, but I think we need to be called what we really are and that's small business owners in the city of Hutchinson. Some of us arrived here by conscious choice, some of us by circumstance. I arrived in my position by both. My father, Robert Graves, who's over there, Bob is most people calling, began his adult life as a teacher, then a chemist, but the pressures of a growing family led him to build his own home. His abilities and attention to detail of the project led him to start building other people's homes, start his own business as a home builder. He is recognized by his peers and became president of the Hutchinson Home Builders Association. While in office, he and other members provided labor and materials for projects to improve our city. An example would be the home builder's shelter in Cary Park. Since there is no real pension for small business owners, my father made a conscious choice. He decided to use his talents to remodel properties and even build new properties to rent with the idea that would support him in his later years. Late one night, as a child, my dad took me with him to unlock apartment for a renter. He said, I said, "This is a pain. Why are we doing this?" He told me, "I like helping our renters." He's like, "Son, we just can't ignore this problem because it would be more convenient. People are counting on us." So that kind of struck me. So I've been around my dad's business my whole life, from late nights, you know, stopping plumbing leaks, fires, domestic disputes, cleaning, repairs, remodels, re-remodels. You know, I'm proud of the way my dad has used his abilities to help others. I became a rental property manager in December of twenty-twelve, which interrupted my career as a nurse, which is the way I chose to use my abilities to help others. That year, my dad's health issues took away his ability to plan, implement, or manage the day-to-day operations of his business. Unfortunately, this had been going on for some time unknown to me. So that's how we both got here. Graves Enterprises, which is the name of our company, it does support my father and his retirement and we also maintain the goal of providing people nice places to live, but that's not its only economic impact. In the past quarter, Graves Enterprises paid or used six freelance individuals for various labor, nineteen local Hutchinson businesses for maintenance and repairs, has loans and accounts at three local financial institutions. We also use the national and regional businesses that are located here in Hutchins, Hutchinson, so we provide economic support to our local, to our other businesses in Hutchinson as well. Kind of the reason I was up here today is that recently, the targeted actions of the rental property inspection department have threatened small businesses like my father's. For some of the stories that I've been told, I would, they would be considered harassment by any reasonable person. As a lifelong resident, I found these stories embarrassing, that the city of Hutchinson would do that stuff. I am sure my statement today will make our business a target as well. I frankly considered selling all the rentals and everything else we own here and leaving this town where I grew up, but I just keep hearing, "Son, we just can't ignore these problems because it would be more convenient. People are counting on us." Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for sharing. Again, I'll invite anybody else that wants to comment to this matter or others. Okay, at this point, I think I'm going to conclude this part of the conversation, but I would be remiss if I didn't. I made notes, I'm sure others did as well, about some things that probably maybe we need some clarification, but I would be remiss if I didn't ask city if they had any commentary, response to some of the allegations or commentary.
Well, you know, I don't know where to begin. I mean, you know, one of the first things, I guess, I would just say is that we keep talking about peeking in windows and nobody's peeking in windows. It's part of an inspection process and there's these, these widespread allegations that our inspectors are peeking in windows and that's simply not the case. So we got to make sure we have all the facts. You know, this rental inspection program has a history. You go back to the, when we adopted the property maintenance code back in two thousand and ten. And the reason for the program was to address some of the dilapidated housing in our community, substandard rentals in this community, and everybody wants that addressed. And, but most of the people we hear speak here today aren't, maybe aren't the problem. But how do you adopt an ordinance that addresses that problem without enforcing it, you know, to all the landlords? We've got fifteen hundred landlords in this community, fifteen hundred. There's four or five here today that are talking concerned about the inspection part of it. Some of the landlords are here today, that were here today, have multiple violations in municipal court. You guys have seen some of the pictures of the conditions of some of those rentals. So there is a need for this program, but at some point in time, the elected body, whoever is going to have to decide, is this a priority in Hutchinson or do we move on? The question about right of entry, the code that was adopted in two thousand and ten, the right of entry, the code officials authorized to enter the structure or premises at reasonable times to inspect, subject to constitutional restrictions or unreasonable searches and seizures. So what we adopted in two ten allows that. I have no problem with the fact that we, we should just do inspections from the right of way. I really don't care. If that's what we, if that's where we want to go, we can make, you know, we can do that. That, that isn't really the whole point of this whole program, but really frustrated with some of the allegations that have been made. Mr. Greaver's made allegations on the radio, made the same ones this morning that fortunately he was stomped down on, because those are personal attacks on individuals that work for the city that are inspecting a program that this body adopted, that the Housing Commission supported. And so at some point in time, we need to just decide, and that day will come. At the end of this year, this program is set to, to sunset. And so the council's going to have a decision to make, November, December timeframe, as to whether we want that program to continue. And there needs to be support for that. Inspectors inspect what they're given to inspect. And yeah, there's probably, I mean, the anti-siphon issue, you know, that's the, the latest water fountain issue, if you will. Not a big issue, but, but it's part of the inspection process on the exterior. So, and it's a four-dollar fix and, you know, I, I think the plumbing code allows that or requires that going back to the early, early eighties. So, so that's all I have to say, but as I said, I think the, the decision point for this council is going to be coming at the end of this, at the end of this year as to whether this program continues or not. But, but please understand that our inspectors aren't what some people are portraying them to be. They're out there doing their job, hopefully very respectfully. Not going to say there haven't been confrontations because I've heard about some of those, but I have a lot of confidence in what they're doing and feel like they're, they're enforcing what this body has, has approved.
Very good. Thank you. I, I want to echo some of the comments made by the various parties and, and I also want to, as, as a matter of just procedure, again, no action is going to be taken today because this is not an actionable item, it's not on the agenda. I, I want to thank everybody for coming forward and presenting their remarks. I want to remind everybody what John just said, that the, the, the program is set to sunset in December of this year, and so there will be a discussion as to its...
Appropriateness.
Appropriateness and so on and so forth. I, I think at this point, I'm going to ask if the council has any questions that they want to address. There was a couple that I visited with some folks that I wanted to make sure we had some conversation about, and so I might start if, if I, if I could. One of them was with regards to the certificates that said that they, they were valid for X amount of years. I understand there was some sort of a clerical error or something like that. Could you maybe just give me the, the brief summary on that?
Yeah, there were some that, and I, I don't know all the details, but if you got a clear inspection early on, it was a six-year exemption and some of those fell through the cracks that were re-inspected, a few of those, and, and basically we've notified those property owners and let them know that that, there isn't any issues there, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that was, that was just a staffing...
No, that is not what happened. No, that's not what...
We have not been notified.
I have, I have...
Actually...
Well, now, if you, if you've got cases in municipal court, which you do, is that what you're talking about?
Um, no, that is not what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah. You're talking about the six-year, I, I mean, I, I don't know all the details of that, but I guess, what, what was the question then?
Well, I, I guess I just want to know if, if they receive, if an individual received a certificate of compliance that suggested that they're valid or met the criteria or whatever for a six-year period.
They should be good for a six-year period.
Wonderful. Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to hear. Any other questions or comments from anybody else before we close this portion of the meeting?
I think it's way more than four, bud.
Yeah, I, I got to ask you not to yell from the cheap seats, I understand.
I do, I do have several comments. If you'll humor me and cut me off whenever you feel is appropriate, but I, again, wanted to reiterate, reiterate thanks to everybody who came to speak today. It can be very intimidating to speak in a public forum, especially when you view it as confrontational, and I don't think it's confrontational. I think that we have this, this back and forth and, and I want that to end, especially the language against the city staff. That needs to be directed toward us, honestly, and, you know, we'll take your calls, we'll take your emails. As John said, they're carrying out our wishes and the ordinance that we passed. That being said, if communication can be better as to how that can be done, I, I respect those suggestions. And some of the things I heard today is that maybe we're a little bit too nitpicky. As John explained, the reasoning behind this is we received dozens and dozens of complaints from, from renters, that they feel that they're, and, and we're not, we're not attacking you, it's, it's a larger problem. There are amazing landlords in this town and you all provide a valuable service, but some renters were being held in some pretty substandard conditions. We're talking no plumbing, foundational problems with the homes. I mean, I've got several pictures right here of some, of really third-world type stuff. This is Hutchinson, Kansas, we're better than that. So that was the point. Sometimes we forget what the overall goal is, and I'm looking at all of you today and I know your overall goal, as William, you know, so eloquently said, is to provide a valuable service to the people of Hutchinson. So this animosity, I, I wish we could discuss it without so much animosity, but it's a very emotionally fraught thing because I know you take a lot of pride in your properties. So that being said, I am curious, and maybe Trent, you can ask the, or answer this, how strict are we being on these inspections? The point is to make these homes safe and somewhat nice-looking so that surrounding property values don't depreciate. So some of these, well, I guess those were the city ones, I was like, why, why would these be considered a violation? Can you just speak to that, like how strict we are on these?
Yeah, so you mentioned life safety. Back when this program was in its infantile state, that was the goal, was our life safety. So those initial inspections that were done, the certificates that were sent out, it was for missing smoke detectors, broken outlets, electrical boxes we would look at, water heaters, et cetera. When that changed at the state level and became an exterior inspection only, you have literally like five things to look at. So if there is paint missing from the face or the face is completely rotted through, as we've got current cases on, we're going to write them and we're going to cite that violation. That is our one opportunity to give that one inspection and not have someone come back after the fact and go, "This face is completely rotted. Why did that inspector not cite that person?" Or if you get a neighbor complaint on it, which we've had several, we've got a gentleman in the audience that has a complaint on the neighbor's house next door to them. So we need to address it to the best of our ability. Nitpicking, I would want to see photos and get specific on the situation. These city properties, obviously that's not part of the rental program, so our inspector's not going to go out and inspect city properties, it's not part of anything that's been adopted. We've got a manager that manages facilities and those comments and photos should have been addressed to that facility manager. So as far as nitpicking, we're there to address literally five different categories on the exterior of the property.
Okay. Another question I had is that we used to have a policy, or maybe it wasn't a formal policy, but a protocol whereby people were informed about when inspectors would come out. I, are we doing that?
We are not informing anyone.
I would like to see that change, and I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong. I'm just saying I personally would be creeped out by that. Like, I'm creeped out when the Jehovah's Witness comes to my door.
Sure, sure.
So I, I would like to see that change.
Well, and we've, we've discussed door tags and so forth. The original intent, again, going back before the law was changed, we were, and there's gentlemen, landlords and, and women in here that we have scheduled those appointments with, that was the purpose of that section. We've got Mel McKay in here, he called immediately and said, "Hey, you know, here's my units. I've got however many come and, and inspect them." That was the whole reason for it. The landlord was the one scheduling with the tenant, notifying them, they were telling us when they wanted us there. If it was Monday at three o'clock, we were going to be there Monday at three o'clock. Doing the exterior inspections, we're literally on the property for maybe three, four minutes, unless there's electrical panel that we see some issues with and we might spend a little bit more time on it. But we're there for a short period of time to, so to schedule a time with the landlord will probably never happen because they're going to kick that can down the road because it's really not in their best interest.
Well, could we provide them with options, like slots, and then say we're going to be there? I'm, I'm just thinking of different, because I'm, I'm being honest, it would really creep me out, even if it was only for thirty seconds, it just would.
We can do as, anything as you guys want handled. We have one staff person for this position.
Okay.
So if you want us to schedule with every landlord, we can. The expectation of getting through all of them may not happen due to, now we're going to be on, on a very time-restricted basis, but if that's the direction that you feel moving forward, we'll do that and we'll get, accomplish what we can this year.
Well...
So Trent, there's a violation by landlord, and they're written up. And the feedback I've gotten typically is that, well, we are told that we're going to be in court and we're going to have a five-hundred-dollar fine. And therein begins the controversy right there. How does this thing ultimately get, get to, to court and how, how do the courts handle it and how are the fines handled?
Courts and fines, I don't know if Paul could speak better to that. There are minimum fines and, and there is jail time, if you will, if the judge sees fit based on whatever circumstance. It is a minimum issue when you go there.
Has that ever happened, though?
It has happened a couple times, yes. Those cases have gone on for over three years in, in one case, and the judge, I think, gave that person thirty days. But to get to that point, first of all, and the whole discussion of how much it costs and so forth, we had one gentleman that said, "What are you going to do? I'm not going to do anything at all. Okay, we're going to send this to court. If they're not willing to work with us to open up that communication, start giving us timeframes to get things accomplished, our job is done at the end of the thirty days, which is minimum, we're going to send that case to court." At that point, it's between that individual and the judge of what happens with the case, whether fines are assessed, whether jail time or, it extends for years, that's out of our hands. We're there just to represent the facts of if something was accomplished or not. If they make progress and they keep that communication open and keep timeframes going, that case will stay open for many ti, many months or even years. There's cases that we have open for years.
Really?
Yes. We've got a gentleman in the office, Mr. Greaver, that was given a six-month extension. So as much as they might say we want to pick on them, my personal feelings aside from Richard Greaver, who was part of this program, he was an advocate for the program until it came to vote. When it came to vote, he flipped the script. We still gave Richard Greaver a six-month extension on his property. So we work with people the best we can. Once we fill that wall is up and they're done working with us, we're going to put them in front of someone else that they might be able to get more communication, more things accomplished with, and that's going to be the judge.
So are there half a dozen that go to court or dozens or...
No, we've got plenty that go to court.
You've got plenty?
Yep.
Really?
Yep, every other Friday, we're in court. Probably in, in the case of this program and maybe some other property maintenance, maintenance code owner occupied, we probably have ten cases every other week.
Wow. Trent, regarding this program, do you see any other way to ensure property meets minimum safety standards without inspections?
Without inspections, no.
Without, no. Because we have a responsibility to ensure property in our city meets safety.
Yes, so, you know, again, the goal was, interior was going to be the biggest benefit of the program. Do I have an issue going on the city street? Um, do I have an issue going on the city street, alley sidewalks? I don't. Is it gonna be as thorough? No, it's not. But if it is what calms the situation, we're fine with that. We don't want our inspector, with the craziness going on, to be put in an unsafe condition. And if there's someone that thinks he's someone other than a city inspector doing a three-minute inspection on the exterior of the home, it is not worth his life, his livelihood, or anything about that. So we made a decision, me and John, a couple weeks back, after some of these complaints came up, to put him on the street, alley, and sidewalk. So it's not that we're trying to be crazy enforcers out there. We're trying to do our job, the job that was adopted, that was approved by the council and by several committees before it ever came here. So, to answer life safety, we're doing our best. Um, this was identified years ago, too, with all the different housing studies, the City of Hutchinsons has assessed and had, had been given. Planning could speak to those dates, but, I mean, it's not that there's not an issue. There is an issue. And whether this program goes away, it doesn't matter. If we enforce the property maintenance code, do our best on it, we'll make a dent. But people are gonna feel that pain. Um, the roof inspections that were brought up, those roofs have lived their life. And if you're not maintaining your house similar to what the house you live in, someday it's gonna come back. And it's gonna, just like we in planning, uh, budget sessions, we kick that can down the road on equipment or on something. Someday it's gonna rear its head up, and we're gonna have to pay that price. That's kinda what's happening now.
Well, I can remember housing studies in the City of Hutchinsons, going back to the mid-nineties. At the end of those, we'd always have some strategic plan or some recommendations. Every one of those, I think there were three in a row, recommended, um, the creation of a rental registration program, recognizing that we had a disproportionate amount of rentals versus owner occupied in this community. And when studies were done to gauge the condition of those, those happened to be declining at a greater rate than owner occupied properties. So, um, I think it's easy when we hear one side to get really overwhelmed and say, "Well, that's not right, that's not right. We gotta stop this." But leadership isn't doing what's easy when you have a bunch of people upset at you. It's about looking at things from all sides. This has been thirty years in the making, twenty years in the making. Um, we can stop doing it, but it's not, it's not gonna get any better. Um, one thing I did want to ask, if our inspector writes something up that is then determined to not be a violation by, you know, a certified electrician or whatever, one, does that happen? And two, what's the protocol on that? Because I think the city should be responsible for the bill of the landlord, if that's the case.
Well, one que- I don't know on the first complaint that that came up. Um, I don't know that situation. Um, the other one that was brought up, I do have those photos, and we reviewed those photos before that violation was sent out. Um, the wire goes from a solid to a strand wire. So for any inspector not sizing wire, that's a red flag that the electrician did not do the wire. Um, that one did get called by an electrician, called and spoke to our electrical inspector. They went through the wiring of that box and determined that it was safe. But it's a red flag to us, going out there doing, again, a three-minute inspection, when you have two different types of wires being used in that panel. So typically, a, a beautiful, uh, electrical wiring system will go from the last outlet of the circuit all the way to the breaker. This stopped short of the breaker and had a blue connection, which is a strand wire going to the breaker. That's why we sent it out. So no, I don't think we're responsible, because in the case that we are incorrect, are we responsible? We're gonna err on the side of safety.
Okay.
And that also, that property did have some knockouts that were not done, uh, that were, one, left open, and then had duct tape over those. No electrician's gonna use duct tape to keep people from prying into an open panel. That dead front cover is to protect anyone from going and doing anything other than touching the fuse or the breakers. And when you use duct tape to close those up, we know that that was not done properly.
Well, I just want the community to know that we're on their side, and if there is a mistake that we make, should that ever happen, we would be responsible for that financial obligation.
I think every situation's unique, and, and the one he described might be different from others, uh, but, uh, uh, we would certainly have to look into see who bears the liability. Uh, I think it's worth the conversation, uh, to do so.
I do have a couple comments. Um, first, I, I'm sorely disappointed that, that the relationship between the city and landlords has, has become as fractured as, as it is. Uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that there can be, uh, repair and improvement to that over, over the coming months and years. It's, it's just disappointing to me. I think that a valuable service is done by our inspectors, a difficult, difficult task. Their job is to tell us what we've done wrong, uh, or what we may, what we may have done wrong. I don't like hearing that. I doubt that, that any of you do. Now, I don't know how many of you are aware, I'm a landlord and have been for twenty-five years as well, uh, in this city. And yet, I, I have supported since the, the effort to, to introduce the International Property Maintenance Code in 2010, I think, the city manager said. So for nine years, uh, that effort. I, I want to be proud of what I do, uh, as, as Mr. Graves spoke of. Does that mean I never make, make mistakes? No, it doesn't. But I want to be proud of that. And I want my property to be safe, to be habitable, uh, to be decent. And I don't want slum lords around that aren't providing safe, habitable, habitable, decent property. And so I've supported the rental inspection program and what we're doing so as to, to bring up to better standards what we have existing in our city as far as property that just shouldn't exist, that shouldn't be used for housing people. If, if ever any of us can think of a way to accomplish that, uh, that, that doesn't bring the, the, the conflict that, that, um, comes from an enforcer or an inspector and a person being enforced upon or inspected, um, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll be glad to hear it and so that we can proceed with it. We will be discussing this later in the year, as to whether or not to let the sunset, um, occur. I would hope that we do not. Again, I think that, and as Jade referred to, there have been numerous studies as to what's happening in terms of, um, housing in our town. And as landlords, we have a duty and a responsibility. Uh, yes, there ought to be inspections of, of, of owner occupied. We have limited resource to, to have the people to do that. Certainly, the greater percentage of properties that are not in good shape are rental properties. And again, we're, we do this as a business. As a business, we have some additional responsibility that I, as a homeowner, do not, uh, do not have. I'm, I'm providing for, for me and, and my, uh, my, my family and my house, uh, but as a landlord, I'm, I'm providing for people uh, that, that rely on me. And of course, several of you talked about how your tenants rely on you for taking care of things. I've had the calls at midnight, uh, for, for whatever, whether it's a lockout or a leak or whatever the case might be. That's part and parcel of the business. Um, many, many businesses, occupations are, are governed, are legislated, are inspected. And I think that, given the impact, uh, that, that we can have in a negative way on people, that, that our business deserves to be, uh, inspected as well. I think that's enough. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else on the council have anything to...
Well, I think this has been a, been a healthy, uh, discussion and conversation. Uh, hopefully it's constructive. But I, I'm really looking to the future in terms of, there obviously are barriers here, and there's been barriers since day one. And, um, it's been obstacles that, uh, has, has, uh, has not been very pleasant by those that are impacted and so on. Uh, I, I just don't know, uh, who can get their arms around this to the point that, uh, where do we go from here? And where are the common grounds? Um, where are the changes, the potential modifications in our current inspection program? That, uh, since this thing has, has surfaced, uh, the way it has, uh, are there, are there, uh, major or minor changes that would not dilute the external inspection program? But I think we really need, I think staff and hopefully the Housing Commission really need to thoroughly look at that and to see where, uh, some of these corrections can be made, if there are necessarily corrections that need to be made. Certainly, we don't want to dilute this to the point that, uh, it has no teeth in terms of the violations, because there's obviously typical violations. But, um, is the Housing Commission addressing this in some way? Uh, Tony, you're, are you the, you're the chair, aren't you, Tony? Um, I think we referred some of this to the Housing Commission here several months ago for some, uh, evaluation in terms of the external...
And, and if I could, please do comment, but again, this is not the public hearing. Uh, I, I do appreciate the discussion, and, and please, what you want to lend to it. But, uh, I think after this, we're gonna wrap up this, this portion of it, and I'll summarize some things I have to say, and then we'll keep going. But please, because...
Very quick, no, I'm not the, the current chair.
Oh, you're not the current chair?
Gleason, Gleason is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can just exit. Uh, but yes, uh, the action in the city council last fall, the Housing Commission has started to look at, at the procedures that, that happened, um, with, with the inspections. Again, tough spot, disappointed the way the dialogue, uh, has gotten to, with the controversial attitudes, I guess. Again, the goal was to raise up the housing stock, uh, right? The, the studies that you all mentioned. Uh, nobody's interested in hurting anybody, uh, but helping, um, as far as future dialogue. I think to the landlords, I think you need a new spokesman, besides Mr. Greaver. Uh, Mr. Greaver was involved, um, in the Housing Commission, uh, was there when we voted, spoke in favor of the rental inspection program, uh, reached out to him a couple times through these meetings. "Hey, come talk to the Housing Commission," uh, yet he chooses to do it in this form. So Fran, uh, Mr. Weaver, I didn't catch your, your name, find a new spokesman, come talk to the Housing Commission, and let's fix this. The way he's leading this i- is not healthy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good point.
Okay.
Good point.
And I might just say that regardless of whether or not we have this program, if properties aren't meeting minimum standards by the IPMC, you're still going to be flagged.
Yeah, the tenant still has the right to complain, to file a complaint, correct?
Correct, yeah. And, and we, we still get homeowner complaints from neighbors, and we address that.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's going to be addressed one way or, or the other, if it's squalor. We're not gonna allow that.
Very good. Thank you, uh, for all the commentary, uh, from those in the gallery as well. Uh, again, to summarize, there's at least three different, if not more, items I took. Better announcement of inspections, uh, might become, uh, part of this. Uh, better visibility of the individual that's doing the inspection, uh, and then maybe eliminating that to street and alleys and sidewalks, which may eliminate some of the concerns, not all, but some of the concerns, uh, in the interim period until it does become an item on the agenda, uh, that we will discuss, uh, about, uh, the possibility of it sunsetting. Uh, again, I thank you for, for your time. Uh, appreciate all your commentary. Uh, Linda, next item, please.
Item six, consent agenda.
Um, I will move to approve the consent.
I've got, I've got a couple of...
Oh, you do?
Comments here, if I can, uh, on the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda.
Okay, well, let me make the motion, then you make the content.
All right.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
And then John.
Okay, fine, thank you for that. Uh, Angela, I've just got a couple of questions here.
Can I have the audience turn it down so I can hear what's going on, please?
Okay, we'll, we'll give it just a moment until those that want to exit, exit.
These won't be difficult questions here. Um, I, I noticed on your footnotes here, as it relates to the .35% sports arena sales tax collected between 2015 and 2018, total is $10.1 million, of which 8.67 million has been paid toward the bond and interest debt. So obviously, our revenues are exceeding our bond payments. Have you done any calculations in terms of, uh, when the bonds may retire? Will they retire earlier? Will we then sunset, if, if that's the case, or, uh, how's that process gonna work?
It's been a while since I projected that, but the last time I did, I used a very conservative growth amount for our sales tax, and we would still be paying off, um, the bonds at least six months early, um, if I remember right. I, I think maybe our sales tax, uh, increases will be more than I had anticipated when I calculated that, so hopefully we'll still be able to pay off those early.
Okay, then, if they're paid off, then does, uh, is there a calendar in terms of when, when the sales tax sunsets? How, how does that, how was that worded?
I, I don't know. There is a date where that would go off.
Right.
And I, I think when we originally projected, uh, early on, we were thinking probably we would be maybe a year, uh, paying off early. But sales tax haven't been, you know, numbers haven't been that great, and so now, at the last, it was probably the six months, maybe that improves. But, um, I think typically, uh, the, the sales tax ends at the start of a new quarter, so it's not like it just, if we pay them off today, the sales tax stops today, 'cause it takes a while for all the process to change through the state to take that off, for all the retailers to know that that's no longer collected. But we're still early, um, to know when that would be...
Still too early?
Yeah, yeah. We're only, what, what, four years into a ten-year, uh, did I write four years into a ten-year bond? So it's still way early to make any real projections, probably.
Does this sound like we're kind of on target?
Yeah, oh, we're, yeah, we're definitely on target.
At least we're not falling behind.
Well, you know, in, in the recent news with the county on their payoff, I mean, all these bonds are set up with coverage ratios that are very conservative, um, to where it's very unlikely, um, that a bond wouldn't pay off early, um, just based on the coverage. And nobody wants to be wrong, because at the end of our project, at ten years, 'cause it's off in ten years, we don't wanna not have the bonds paid off. And so, I can't remember the percentage, but it might've been 1.12 or, and so, so, um, front-end loaded might be, but, but the coverage ratios are very conservative. Same thing would've been with the county on the jail where it paid off early because of that, so... But if, you know, without those ratios, and you were projecting just on the dollar it's gonna be, 'cause you don't know five years from now what sales tax numbers are gonna be, so there's always that, that ratio coverage or reserve, if you will. And I think when we did our bond, it's where size, uh, we were very, or our bond, the council was very conservative on that, so... But, but we can put that together. I, I don't know that it means a lot today.
Well, I know it's early, but I was just curious when I saw the, the gap there, the positive gap.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right, yeah. So we're, and the other positive thing there is, you, you'll remember Councilman Dave Line was the million dollars that we set aside up front for future maintenance, and, and that'll be...
Very, very important, extremely important.
The county's been talking about that with theirs. I don't think they did that on the front end, but that's what they plan to do with the money that they have collected up to the date that that tax goes off, that would stay in a maintenance fund for the, for the jail, so... But we'll, uh, we'll, as we get closer to that, take another look at that and get that information back to you, just so you can kinda see.
Fine, so, okay. Second question. Uh, went, went through your financials and your December 31, 2018, uh, receipts expenditures, and was encouraged, really, quite frankly, by some, uh, positive trends that are happening as it relates to the general fund. And, uh, we've had lots of discussions, uh, during the budget process in terms of ending balances and so on. But if you look at your report, uh, the beginning unencumbered cash balance was a little over $4 million, $4.1 million. And your ending unencumbered cash balance today, or, or through December 31st of 2018, was a little over $5 million. So, almost a million-dollar gain there. So, I guess my question is, 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 is that $5.1 million sustainable, do you believe, throughout, uh, 2019?
Well, that's something we're gonna look at more when we do our budget study session on the 26th. We're gonna tell you where the, that increase came from. I think so far, looking at it, it's a lot of vacancies. We had a lot more vacancies than anticipated.
I see.
And that's where a lot of that increase came from.
So it's savings on the expense side, not necessarily increase in revenues or...
Right, the revenues were about what was budgeted, so, overall.
But that was a, a surprise for the 26th, and you've unveiled the surprise that, uh, that our ending balance is actually a lot better than what we budgeted. I think our budget was 4.2 or something like that. And, uh, I mean, that's a bit of good news, but as Angela said, a lot of that is based on the expense side and, or, uh, vacant positions. But, but it's still good news, and we kinda talked about that last year, about how those fund balances kinda work, your vacancies, and... Although we budgeted vacancies, y- y- you know, this year and last year as well, for the first time, uh, for many years. But, uh, but, you know, that's a, as long as that number holds, and I think we've got the accounts payable still out, but I think that number should hold and, and is really, should be a good start for us, um, going into the budget season.
Okay, all right.
But good observation and good question.
Good work, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And keep your eye on the prize, we, we're not there yet.
Well, I know, yeah, yeah.
But we're, great trend, great, great trend. Anybody else have any commentary? I believe it's been moved and seconded.
No, we need a second.
Oh.
I thought Steve seconded it.
I thought I seconded it. You didn't hear it over the conversation, okay. Now it's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll?
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Inskeet?
Yes. Next item.
Item seven, public hearing to consider demolition of the Sugar Mill building.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Inskeet?
Yes.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. It's still morning.
It's still morning.
Today, we'd like to discuss the demolition of the historic Sugar Mill on First Avenue. This was a request to appeal the Landmark Commission's decision to deny that request. And being a CLG, the Landmarks Commission, certified local government by the State Historic Preservation Office, the Landmarks Commission cannot approve a demolition of a structure and that is why we're here today. The property is owned by Ted Robinson of TNT Leasing, the mailing address is there. Some brief history on the property, it was built in 1881, 82, and that's included in your packet. It's a, it's the only known remaining structure associated with Kansas sugar production. It was not a successful business. It lasted about two years before they moved on to other manufacturing. It's an example of late 19th century industrial construction, especially that limestone material that was common at that time. The property is listed on the national, state and local registers. Because it's on the local register, you will be having, you will have to make two separate motions on this case. One for the state and national and one for the local. One is for the state ordinance, one is for the local ordinance. This is a contributing structure in the Houston-Whitesite National Historic District. Here's the property location on First Avenue, corner of, at 600 East First Avenue. There's a historic photo of the property looking north. I see originally it had two smokestacks and briefly used for sugar cane production and then it moved on from there to other manufacturing. Used for, I think, pummy manufacturing for most of the 20th century. Here it is today. This photo was taken on the 6th, the day the inspector ran out and took photos of the collapse. There's more photo more recently. There's, you know, just some detail. You'll notice there is, it's hard to see in here, there's a, that chimney is cracked down the center. So this kind of goes to the point we're trying to make here, that this building has gotten to a point where repairs are, will be extensive to take, to really bring this building up to an occupiable standard. And here's a picture of what's happened. This is on the north facing side and the elevator shaft that, I'm not sure exactly when it came down, at some point before the 6th. Not much has changed since the collapse. This was taken on the 12th, I believe. Oh, no, sorry, the 6th of February and this is on the 12th of March, so, then a month's time, not much has happened. Just another angle. Okay, this is a close-up detail of some of the masonry. You can see, let me get my laser pointer out. Here is the original masonry, at least not, maybe not original, but the older masonry and then what's been patched with a nonhistoric cement, probably Portland cement of some kind. I'm not an expert on masonry, but this is typical throughout the whole structure is this, this patchwork of cement and masonry that's basically holding this piece, this building together. It's the, what, it has, because there has not been consistent repointing on the structure, estimates from engineers and architects, I include in the report, have left it basically like stones sitting on top of each other without any sort of glue holding them together. Yeah, see, here's a close-up of what, of existing, of the original masonry there, original pointing mortar, yeah. So the Landmarks Commission, they determined that demolishing the building would damage or destroy the historic significance of the structure, so they had to deny the application. With our agreement with the state, we are, the Landmarks Commission cannot make a determination that would damage or destroy a structure. The City Council is given the authority to grant appeals to those decisions, maintaining local control. So the factors that are considered for an appeal are included in the state statute. So we look at technical issues, design issues, how it's related to the community plan and those, and then the economic issues, which is probably the biggest and kind of relates to all the others. Because with technical issues and design issues, you can talk to Trent about this, with enough money, any project can be rehabilitated, but we don't have unlimited money in this case. We don't have the millions of dollars needed to bring this building up to an occupiable code, and not just occupiable, but up to the Secretary of Interior Standards and to a point where it's a, it's a nice building, a building where, a marketable building for tenants, for businesses, for other uses. So the first issue are the technical issues. The applicant met with engineering consultants on February 11th, 2019, that's included as Exhibit 3 in your packet, and they basically said it's going to take $200,000 to $400,000 to repair the damage, just the, just the collapsed part of the building. There is work beyond that that needs to be done to bring the building up to an occupiable So basically, the work required is possible, but not to really provide any return. It would, it's well beyond the appraised value of the property, which is about $30,000. That's, that's land and the building. So that's, it's well beyond, you know, if you look at that, that's not really a wise economic decision. And the work, while possible, would, it's, it's a difficult process and maybe the applicant can speak more on that when we get there. So then, we'll look at the photos of the brick again, kind of discussed that already. Design issues, to really keep this to historic standards, you can't simply just repoint the mortar like they have here. You have to deconstruct the building and, you know, identify each stone because each one's unique. They aren't standard shapes like bricks, these are, every piece is different, so you're trying to keep track of each piece and then you would have to relay it with new mortar in order to really have a lasting impact and to be according to the Secretary of Interior Standards. And that is a, can't imagine the process to go through that. But it is possible, again, with enough money, anything's possible. So design issues, there's not really a design barrier to completing this, it's more of an economic issue. As far as related to the community-wide plan, though not explicitly stated in our comprehensive plan, the city has a responsibility to identify and demolish structures that pose a threat to the public's health and safety. And, you know, the Trent goes through that with residential structures and commercial structures, that's, I imagine, it's not here anymore, but they does the same thing. There are no specific strategies that indicate restoring damaged structures, like the Sugar Mill are a priority of the city. So that, taking, taking that into account, there, really the community plan is not in place to save this structure and then it comes down to, well, who and with what money are we going to, would we save this, this building? All this leads to the economic issues. We've talked about the $200,000 to $400,000 just to repair the damaged section of the building. Back in 2017, there were some interested buyers in the building. They walked away after meeting with an architect and that architect, William Morris, which had a contract, the city had a contract with, estimated that the costs to bring that building to the standard that they needed was about $2 million. So that, again, that, that's beyond repairing the damage, that's bringing it to usability. And that's well beyond the $31,000 appraised value. And even with the equity that would come from that improvement, I don't think a million dollars are going to magically appear in the equity of the building after all that So I think that, that's the end of my presentation. You have any questions and go through the public hearing?
Aaron, at some point, excuse me, at some point in time in the past, was, was this building such that it would have been feasible to keep repairs current, maybe would be the word, to, so that it would, I mean, I know that's long past, but would it have been?
Well, I mean, any building, I don't really know the history of the building here, but what it sounded like, even in 2017, when I talked to William Morris, he said that that building just needed repointing. But he said, you know, if it's collapsing, then it's to that point where you're probably beyond repointing on the, on the building. So-
Is that an answer of yes to my question?
Yeah, I guess last year would have been the time to do it.
Even as recent as a year or two ago, it could have been repointed and, and been saved.
Yes, there, there are obviously interior structure work that would have also needed to have been done. So I can't really speak to that, but as far as the mortar and the, the masonry, yes, about a year ago.
Do you know, is the interior dilapidated, deteriorating as well?
I asked for interior photos from the applicant, I have not received those. From, this just hearsay from other people being inside, it's, it's a little-
Water damage probably, uh-
Yeah, it's a little bit, it does not appear as bad on the inside, but the architect, William Morris, said that there was a lot of structural work that was required.
Okay.
Any other questions, Aaron? Is the applicant in the audience? Wonderful. Would you like to address, or is there any commentary you'd like to add to this? And if so, please approach, give us your name and address and-
Yeah, I'm Ted Robinson. I'm one of the partners with TNT Leasing. The Sugar Mill, I think the address is 600 or 612, I don't know, it seems to vary depending on who you talk to, but East 1st Street. And, you know, I really, you know, I hate to see the building get tore down, honestly, but at this point, I don't see where there's any other options. I mean, I don't have the funds to correctly rebuild it and, I mean, I've, you know, I've owned a couple of local historic homes in Hutchinson, the building that we operate out of, with my cabinet company is right next door and the old CK Supply Building, which was built by the Nelson Brothers after they moved out of the Sugar Mill. And, you know, I love the history of the stuff, but, you know, we tried selling it, couldn't get anybody that was really interested or wanted to spend the money in it and, and to be honest, when we bought the building from Rob Wilbeck, it was more of a, a land issue, the way the properties were divided, if somebody would have bought the Sugar Mill and ran a fence between our properties, it would have completely taken away our access to the west side of the building and that was our main interest in it to begin with, was for the property. So, you know, that's about all I got, I guess, so.
Any questions of Mr. Robinson?
How long have you owned the property?
I'm going to say probably about 15 years, maybe.
Okay. Does, does the, does the land have some value for you, once the building is, is absent?
Well, actually, we've already taken care of the land issue before we listed it last year. We had the properties platted and-
I remember, that's right.
Yeah, they'd never been platted, so we had the properties platted and then we changed the boundaries of the Sugar Mill where we had the property to the north side so we could pull in our trucks and trailers and have access to our building. So we'd already really taken care of that. The property, I mean, it won't be any different than the way it is currently.
Okay, I remember taking that action, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Robinson? Thank you for coming down and sharing with us. Anybody else in the audience wants to speak to the matter? It is a public hearing, please.
I'm Joel Haag, I live at 1015 East 22nd Avenue. I'm on the Hutchinson Landmarks Commission at this time. Just wanted to address one thing about this building. It's served its purpose and I think the question about maintenance, it was probably something that could have been started many years ago, but wasn't. So there is a time that every city and every property owner must come to a decision. Do I have the resources to save it? And if so, can I invest that much in of it? And will I ever get it out of it? And if so, okay, if not, do I love it so much that I don't want to spend that much money on it? Ask a person that restores an antique car. They love it so much that they're going to dump money into it, they'll never get out of it, but they love it. We love this building, but I don't think any one of us, even as a community, could step forth with the one and a half, $2 million or what it would take to restore this property to what it should be. So the only thing I would want to point out about it is a possibility that happened somewhere else in the state, but if this, and when this building probably comes down, is there any portions of it that are salvageable that can be repurposed anywhere else in the community?
Oh, that's about-
Those stones could be sold or given to something and it could become something in Cary Park that has a plaque on it that says, "These stones once were the Hutchinson Sugar Mill." Something that helps the memory live on and something that, again, the Landmarks Commission in the future can point to and say, "Here's why we help property owners save buildings." Because this one, again, the last time it helped make sugar was so long ago, it was forgotten. And then Nelson Manufacturing did manufacture irrigation parts in it for many years, but it served its usefulness. And, you know, we would have had a great old courthouse on South Main Street if we could have, as a community, saved it, but it's long gone as well. So again, the only thing I would like to point out is, if and when it comes down, is there any way that we can figure out how to save the memory of this building so future generations can learn from what we found out today? Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you, Richel.
Again, we're only moments away from making a decision one way or another, but should we slide that way? I like the idea of repurposing pieces, parts or whatever, if possible. Seems like there was something else I was going to say.
I might, sir, I didn't write your name down.
Joel Haag.
Or Ted Robinson.
Ted Robinson. Mr. Robinson, might your, your partnership be willing to do some recycling or donating or whatever of the limestone blocks as was suggested?
I'm not sure what would be involved with that. I mean, currently, we're, we have the cost of tearing it down, which is a sizable amount. I don't know if that would interfere with the, the demo person's progress or cost more if he's got to sort through or, I mean, I guess I'd, I'd be willing to entertain it, but I would, would appreciate some help with that as well, so. I'm just not sure exactly how it would work, who it would go to, I mean-
Maybe the Landmarks Commission could-
Well, I was going to say, Joel, maybe, maybe the two of you could talk and maybe something could come out of that conversation of, if possible.
I think it's hopefully a time for us to talk with, with Mr. Robinson and also with the person slated for demolition, to find out if there's a cost-effective way to set aside some material, to set aside some material, not necessarily everything. So again, just whatever it takes to help a portion of this building properly live on. We don't want every stone set aside to be repurposed, but something that, again, in the future, 50 years from now, somebody can go somewhere and see what once was.
Well, I'd ask if the two of you'd be willing maybe to have a conversation, maybe that'll start something rolling and maybe it won't, but at least a shot was given.
Just a museum piece at best. Just a museum piece at best.
Very good, very good. Any other questions or commentary? If not, then I would entertain a motion to close the, the hearing.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Yes.
Like I said, you'll need to make two separate motions. First motion will be on the national state register determination, so either grant the appeal or uphold the Landmarks Commission decision. And the motions are identical, except on the local determination, there is the removal of it from the local register.
I've moved to grant the appeal of the Landmarks Commission determination and authorize issuance of a demolition permit for 600 East First Avenue based upon the finding that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the project.
Second.
Moved in second. Please call the roll.
Would you, I'd like to comment if you would. I made similar comment when we were advised about this. It, it's a shame, and it's a crying shame. This may not be workable, but I, to, to the Landmark Commission, I, maybe that's a body that could, could, in, in, in a caretaker or nanny kind of role, keep an eye on our, our historic buildings that look to be in a condition that they, they can be continued to be, to be functional and, or habitable and, and repairable. This building at some point in time was salvageable and, and could have been saved and it's a shame that, that it wasn't. And I don't know if it was, I, I really kind of doubt it was as little as a year ago. I guess it was, who knows, any number of years, but the point being, it could have been. And we can't be the saver of all things, but as, as we continue to lose our history, we, we lose something that's not regainable, whether or not we have pictures or stones to be able to memorialize it. Joel mentioned the, the county courthouse of years ago and of course, the Basanti is a, is kind of the poster child for that in this city and there are certainly other structures. And I, I certainly have an interest. I would hope that there, there's others of us that have an interest, even in, in terms of the city being somehow involved or a city, city-appointed commission being involved or whatever to, to overlook, oversee and, and maybe advocate for, for structures before they come to the point where it's, it's economically crazy to do anything with it any longer. So Joel, I guess I'd toss that into your court at this point in time, you and the Landmarks Commission, and maybe that's a, it may not be your charge at this point, but maybe it's one you can adopt and with concurrence, yeah, be more, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I'll add to that, if you don't mind, that we do have a, kind of a priority study session coming up. That might be identified as a priority to identify those buildings that are salvageable prior to their, living past their, their shelf life, if you will. You mentioned all those gray ones. I think of one that just burnt recently. I, I look at cheap beer back there, but I read that, that building had some real length behind it, 1800s or such. And you're right, that cannot be regained, recaptured. So agree, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it has been moved in second. If you'll call the roll, please.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes. And then we need another motion.
Thank you. I move to grant the appeal of the Landmarks Commission determination removing the property from the local register and authorize the issuance of a demolition permit for 600 East First Avenue based upon a finding that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to the project.
Second.
Moved in second. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes. And since it is my meeting and coffee in about an hour and a half is about all I can stand.
Listen, I didn't last that long.
Fair enough. Let's take five. Is that adequate?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be right back. Thank you.
To the last item, the Stevens Building, which is being worked on in Jim's site, and I could certainly speak to it, is a win and a success column in terms of a, one of the, if not the oldest building standing yet, and that will be continued to stand. That has some federal grant money, a private investor locally, so things certainly are doable and the Stevens has been, is currently a big win for us going forward.
Good point, good point. Yeah, and again, it takes identifying it and, and marrying it with willing partners and finding appropriate funding, which are feasible.
Doable. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Okay, kind of lost my place there. We, next item, I believe?
Item 8A, consider ordinance amending Chapter 27 zoning regulations of the city code regarding accessory buildings.
There we go. Aaron.
Hello again. Aaron Barlow, Associate Planner. Will be speaking today about proposed changes to the Section 27b14 of the zoning code relating to carports and garages on large lots. This is a request to allow some flexibility on our accessory building codes. A study session was held on February 12th, 2019. The Planning Commission discussed in depth many of the issues that were, were brought up specifically first, allowing multiple garages. This was out of a variance request by Jerry McGonigal. He wanted to build a second garage on his lot, but our code does not permit it. So after denying that request, the Planning Commission requested that staff look into this, our codes and see if there is some flexibility. Planning Commission determined that, you know, for these large lots, you do need extra machinery to maintain all the vegetation and everything to keep your property, keep your property maintained. So they, a single garage might not be enough, a second might, is probably what you, you probably need a second garage on those lots. They also discussed the carport code. It was a little bit confusing and it was just to kind of clarify it, to specifically differentiate between attached and detached carports. When that code was adopted, I believe this goes back all the, to 2011, all carports were considered detached, as in you're only allowed one carport per lot, no matter how it is connected to your building. After discussing with Planning Commission and kind of looking through some history, that was kind of to address the lean-tos you see in the community, kind of a, an attached, half a carport attached to the side of a building. And to say, carports that are structurally or architecturally integrated with a building would not be considered detached, but those that are lean-tos, you know, half a wood carport or Carolina carport would be considered detached. We'll get to that. So the overview, I guess we can hear this, I should have gone to this slide. So then permit more than one detached garage on large lots and providing some screening requirements for those additional garages to maintain the residential neighborhood character in, in these neighborhoods where we'd allow the second garage. Amending the carport requirements, you know, that, like I said, distinguishing between attached and detached and then only permitting one, one attached and one detached car per lot. And then minor adjustments to conform with our existing regulations, there was one area in there that had a side yard setback that we removed to be in line with the changes that we made back in August with the R6 because, you know, allowing the three-foot setback, this was in contradiction of that. So that's just some clarification. Okay, so we'll go through what, what the changes are. So the large lots, the line we drew was at five acres. That's an easy line for enforcement. That's the line for the TA zone. It's a line for allowing septic and allowing non, non-city water.
Transitional agriculture?
Yeah, sorry, transitional agricultural zone. So that, that's a zone that makes it easy to enforce. It kind of fits with kind of the character and the lines we've already drawn in the code and that's why we chose five acres. So that, that, just, we'll go to the map. Here is a map showing all the properties that meet these requirements that are in the TA, R1, R2, and R3 zones and that are larger than five acres. Blue is five to 10 acres and red is 10 plus acres. They're two city properties. I guess to speak specifically to the, why we stuck to these specific zones, those R1, R2, and R3 are moderate density zones. You get to the R4, R5, R6, that's a much higher density and you're not going to have these types of properties, or at least you shouldn't have these types of properties, zoned R4, R5, or R6.
Okay, Aaron, let me interrupt you for just a sec, though.
Yes.
There are a couple of places in town where we've demolished a house.
Yes.
And the individual next door has bought that lot. Now, they're not going to hit five acres, are they, with any of that?
It would take, you know, south side of town.
Yeah, south, and I can think of a couple in the mid part of town.
With these, you know, more traditional lots. It would take a lot of lots to get to that point.
Okay, they have to. How many acres are in a block?
I don't know. I don't...
It was my understanding there would be no math today.
I'm sorry, I just thought of that.
An acre is the size of a football field, I can tell you that, so.
Okay, so, yeah, it's not, it's not gonna... Okay, so it's not going to happen?
It's not going to happen.
Okay. Okay, just, just curious.
Okay, so we, 150, 150?
Okay.
You'd probably need, okay, you'd need five of that, so...
Yeah, okay.
Maybe if someone bought up a whole block, and even if they did, that brings us to this point, the screening requirements.
Okay.
We kind of copied these from the commercial screening requirements and adjusted them to fit these types of properties. So if they have wooded areas, which a lot of these properties do, then they just need a 20-foot wide area of undisturbed wooded area and that would count as their screen...
Okay, so yeah, it's not, it's not gonna, okay, so it's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen.
Okay. Okay, just, just curious.
Okay, so we, 150, 150. You'd probably need, okay, you'd need five of that. So.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe if someone bought up a whole block, and even if they did, that brings us to this point. The screening requirements.
Okay.
We kind of copied these from the commercial screening requirements and adjusted them to fit these types of properties. So if they have wooded areas, which a lot of these properties do, then they just need a 20-foot wide area of undisturbed wooded area and that would count as their screen from the street and from neighboring properties. If they don't, they have two other options. The first is to set back from adjacent streets by 150 feet, adjacent residential lots by 100 feet. So I mean, the first garage does not have this requirement. But each additional garage would need to meet one of these setbacks or barriers. If they cannot meet the undisturbed wooded area or their lot doesn't have those types of setbacks, which I think in the case you're talking about, if they, someone bought up a bunch of lots to demolish the houses and set up a homestead on Fourth Avenue, then they have, that last option is to set up a six-foot wide evergreen screen. Kind of like what's shown there. That's a very effective one. It wouldn't quite have to be to that point. But that's, that's what we require for commercial properties adjacent to residential lots.
Is this pretty reasonable? For instance, the applicant who wanted the variance in the first place, Mr. McGonigal, would he be able to easily meet these requirements?
Yes. He has the 20 feet of undisturbed wooded area. There are a few properties that were originally agricultural lots that are going to have, if they can't meet the setback, they're going to have to plant some shrubs. But usually when they get to be five acres, you don't have a problem setting it back 150 feet from the street.
Thank you.
Okay, the carport changes. This is a lean-to right here. This is what we would describe a lean-to. It is not part of the building. It's a wood, half of a wood structure attached to the side of the home. And this is allowed with the building code, but aesthetically, it's something that we have seen opposition to during the past two changes that involved the accessory structures. So we wanted to maintain that, but also allow people a little bit more flexibility for the carports. And it was meshed in with that, the requirements regarding garages, that we needed to separate them. And this was the easiest way to do that.
And that's now considered a detached?
Detached, yes. In our, under planning, we would consider it detached. That's in quotes because it's clearly attached to the building. But it's not.
It's not part and parcel structural to the building.
Correct. That would look like this. And you see those in some of the older neighborhoods.
It's more like a port crochet.
And these would be considered attached carports.
But both are permitted.
Both are permitted, but with, in this case, they could then build a second carport on their property. In this case, this is their only carport that's allowed. And that's, we didn't want to make too many changes in this code because it was such a quick code change. If we wanted to make much broader changes, we would prefer to have a period of engagement with the community and see what their opinion is on these, on this case. The same thing with the garages, why we stuck with the five acres. This was based off of a variance request of a large lot. And if we were to expand this to the entire city to allow more than one garage, we would prefer to have, you know, to kind of gauge the community's opinion on this and see what their, their feelings are. So we, we did try and send this out to some impacted parties to get some, some feedback. We've done this in the past with many of our other larger code changes. We were unable to have, you know, a full-blown town hall on, on this, this change. But in the future, with the larger changes we have planned, we do plan to have a more involved engagement process. And two comments received from the Board of Realtors, which are included in your packet and on here. Both were in support of the, of the request. Can't go to the next one. This one. So they both were in support, different tone, but. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 26. We sent notice out in the newspaper. We did not receive any, the only comments that we received were from Councilmember Steve Deckent. He came and spoke asking about expanding this request into, you know, the entire city and not just large lots. And, you know, the, the commission and staff, we kind of agreed that it's, it's not impossible, but it's something that we would like to, since it's a much bigger change, it would require larger amounts of engagement with the community.
And I agree.
Okay, good. Okay, and that's, that's the end of my, my comments.
Very good. Any questions of staff?
I just want to commend you and the commission because this is exactly what we want to see is response to requests like this and, and flexibility. I think this is a great show by the city that we're willing to be flexible to people's needs. And so I appreciate the work you all put into it.
And it's the right process as opposed to granting the variance, which would open the city up to, to issues.
I might just expand on Aaron's comments about my appearance. I wasn't really suggesting that they modify what they were recommending to us, but I wanted to introduce the idea. And the thought being that staying within the limits of square footage coverage of a lot, that, those limits that we already have in the code, that, that second car, second car garage is being allowed. And I'm hoping that maybe the Planning Commission will take it up and the process will, will roll and, and public input, et cetera, et cetera. But that was the idea and I'm hoping it's something that we'll be able to see down the road come to us.
Very good. Is there a motion on the item?
I move to approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve amendments to Section 27-314 and to approve an ordinance amending Section 27-314 accessory buildings and uses of Chapter 27 of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Kyrastay Carvalho?
Yes.
And what we'll do next is post it up on the screen.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's see, next item then?
Item 8B, Consider Ordinance Amending Chapter 18 Regarding Alcoholic Liquors and Beverages.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. We're amending Chapter 18 because things change as of April 1. The changes really aren't that dramatic on our part. Looks like a lot because there's so many references to the exact same thing. But just a couple of basics here. Number one, 3.2 to up to 6.6% is actually 4% to 6%. 3.2 is by weight. To get by volume, you multiply by 1.25 and you get volume. So it's really from 4% to 6%, okay? The state didn't really amend all the definitions. They kept a lot of the same definitions. And then they said, "And when you get your cereal malt beverage license, you'll also sell beer with a, an alcohol content up to 6%." So they didn't redefine alcoholic liquor. They didn't redefine cereal malt beverage. They just said, and they didn't redefine beer. Just said you get to sell both. So that's why you see the kind of amendments and, and multiple provisions in Chapter 18. And I changed all those. It's kind of wordy and I left it that way on purpose. There were some people in the alcohol business who were nervous about some of these amendments. And I won't name names, but you know him. And, and so I, I did it in that manner to make it clear. The, the process doesn't change. When you come to the city for a cereal malt beverage license, same application provided by the Attorney General's Office. It's the same process, the same standards, the same qualifications. Everything's the same except you get to sell something in addition to that 3.2. I also think because they didn't change a lot of the definitions and take out all the 3.2, that you'll probably see within the next couple of years, the rest of the amendments from the state of Kansas to take out 3.2 altogether because it's going to go away. And I'm hopeful that when they do those amendments, that they'll get a hold of all the alcohol regulation and do lots of amendments and really do an overhaul because we are sorely in need of that because of the many, many, many variables in alcohol regulation. And does that sound like I have to research those a lot and do that over and over and it's hard to figure out? And I never answer one off the top of my head? That's right. Sorry for the rant.
No, but looking at that, I'm thinking, this is ridiculously complicated.
Right. It's more than it should be.
Yeah.
Yes, and, but really all that's happened here in the proposed ordinance is I took all the definitions and updated them. There's, there's three different statutes and three different areas where they come from. So I just took the definitions and updated them on ours. And they really, for the most part, were not amended by the state. Ours just were in need of amendment. And then you'll look throughout the rest of the document and you'll see each time it's mentioned cereal malt beverage and it'll say, and has the clause, "And beer up to 6% alcohol by volume." And that's really all I've done. So the rest of it is, is really the same. For those who are out there who have cereal malt beverage licenses, whether it's sell at retail or it's a tavern of some type, nothing really changes for them except the product that they're selling. And I'm hoping any questions that you might have asked that you approve it. It will go into effect April 1 and it goes into effect statewide, April 1 by state law.
There you go. Any other questions? That's a pretty good description.
Okay, well, if there aren't any, I will move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 18 alcoholic liquors and beverages of the Code of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas. Authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Kyrastay Carvalho?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 9A, Consider Airport Tea Hanger Assembly and Site Work.
Good morning. I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. And I did bring backup today, Peter from the airport. If you remember back in August, we, the city council approved the purchase of the actual tea hanger kit. So it was just the building for approximately $156,000. The original budget for the tea hanger whole project was $370,000. So track those two numbers out and you get $170,000 balance. Then to do the site work, so actually assemble the building, do the concrete aprons and those sorts of things. And so that was the second phase then was to bid the assembly and the site work. We did that a few weeks ago. Bids came in, as you can see on the bid tab. Low bid was from Prairie Land Works out of McPherson at $399,000. If you do the math, it doesn't add up.
Poor Justin.
I know. I'm done bidding stuff. So we did, we did talk with the low bid because there were some quantities we could reduce. Was no design changes, just general. One example was we had concrete, basically a whole sea of concrete. One, we were able to reduce the amount of concrete by in between each hanger doors will no longer be concrete. It'll be grass. So it looked like little individual driveways as opposed to a sea of concrete. So, so we were able to make some just quantity deductions. We came up with a total deduction of about $88,500, which brought that low bid down to $310,000. That makes our difference then of what we were still short, about $141,000. Some of the other things we did was there was a stone driveway that we can construct in-house. We asked a contractor, "Well, what, you know, what deduction would you give us if we just brought in millions we have onsite and compacted them ourselves?" So to, to come up with $141,000 difference then, I've got a few suggestions here. Runway 422 Silco project, which was complete last year, ended up under budget by about $41,000. Runway 1331 project was scheduled originally for 2019. The FAA has pushed that back to 2020. So we did fund that to 66,000. It was a general fund transfer in the 2019 budget. And then the balance then, we would, we would divide up about $17,000 from the airport maintenance reserve and the park, the public facility maintenance reserve. I will tell you, there's a, there's a likelihood that the current project we have going on at the run, or at the airport, the 1-7 reconstruct, it looks like that project's going to be under budget. I did not want to include that because we don't have all of our reimbursements back from the FAA. So, so there may be some, some funds there available for another project that was under. If that's the case, the, the amount that I would suggest comes out of reserve would just be reduced. We would use those project funds would be my suggestion on that. So. So I know that the question then is why? Why are we in this scenario again? I think there's multiple reasons. Probably one of the biggest, not one of the biggest reasons. One of the reasons was 2017, when we budgeted for this project, we, we talked with Bruce Colley. Engineering department was going to do all the design work. Obviously, things have changed. Engineering was really short-staffed with, without a director at the time. So we chose to have this done, the design work done by BG Consultant, which a cost we were not expecting of roughly $40,000. Steel prices increased significantly from 2017 to today. The FAA did change some, some dimensions of what we needed, so that actually grew the site a little bit as well. And then I think there was just some budgeting errors on top of that that we just didn't, we just missed a little bit on, on the site work. So I think there's kind of multiple reasons, not just one, one big error. I think it was several, several things. So. As far as payback goes then, what does that look like? I know that was a big conversation earlier. It does push the payback out to about 20 years. It's at a $220 lease payment, monthly lease payment with a 2% increase. We do increase all of our leases at the airport now typically by Consumer Price Index. So that varies, but 2% is generally less than what those increases would be. So it just kind of keeps on pace with what all the other leases are paying out there as far as a small increase. So.
Justin, on this, I have to go back to the steel prices. You mentioned like a nearly 30% increase since 2017. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that due to trade situation?
My understanding, it's the tariffs that were put on steel coming in from Europe.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to point that out because it's nothing we could have ever accounted for.
Of course, it's the tariffs.
Wow. That's got to be affecting every city in this.
Every building project.
Hindsight being 2020, though, probably purchasing the building in advance of getting the site work final numbers was, was maybe an error as well.
Yeah, we probably should have bid them simultaneously. I think if we, if we would have allowed the contractor to buy the building, there's a potential for markup on the building, which is what we were trying to avoid, was, was not a contractor markup. So I still think we, overall, the cost was cheaper doing it this way. But then we had the unknown because we, we bought the building and now we're in a situation where we should have done them simultaneously.
Okay. And again, not trying to piggyback. Hindsight, it's easy to, Monday morning quarterback over here, but yeah, okay.
Justin, what would be the ramifications if we chose not to accept that building?
We already have the building.
I'm not sure. If we call, erect a tube and told them we don't, we don't want the building anymore or if we, I guess I don't.
Or do we sit on the building?
Well, yeah, I mean, would, if I buy something at a store and take it back and restock it, but we're not buying a little widget off the shelf. But I mean, basically, would there be simply a restocking fee to simplify it? Or would there be a tremendous penalty? Or would they say, "You bought it, you're, you're stuck with it."
I already have it.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that, but my gut tells me they're going to tell us we have an agreement and it's going to be here in, in April.
I mean, we, we haven't taken ownership of the building, haven't been delivered yet, but it's a designed-built, you know, situation for what we order.
Yeah, basically, the, the building is sitting in Ohio right now, ready to be shipped. So it's, it's packaged. It's going to arrive, yeah, the middle of April.
Remind us again the number of tea hangers and where's your level of interest in? So, and the last time that Hutchinson built tea hangers was 1953?
Well, 68. I think they were, they were completed, yeah, so. But, and if there's a, if there's a positive side to this, well, there's, there is a couple, I think. But now we know what it takes to build hangers at our airport, so when I'm up here in a couple years asking for eight more, the numbers will be better.
You're feeling good about the level of interest?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, that is, yeah, that is never a waiver. Just, just last week, I had, I had aircraft owners in my office asking where we're at on hangers, if we're going to build more. Everybody's pretty much packed to the gills within about.
Tell us again where you're going to site these, going to build them?
What's that?
Or where are you going to locate the tea hangers?
These are all down at the, well, we've got enough room down at the south end of the airfield, right at the intersection of Fourth and Airport Road, near our fueling, our bulk fueling station. There's enough for 24 tea hangers down there, so.
And you said 18 is what is, are going up now?
Eight, just eight.
Eight, excuse me. On the funding, let me make sure I understand, understand things. The 1331 funds are, money's allotted for use this year. FFA, FAA has put off the project, so if we spend them here, we'll have to refund that project again.
In, yes, in 2020, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not unspent money, it's only unspent this year. Okay, so we're essentially grabbing something that we have committed, but, but for a year from now, at this point in time, okay. The 422 Seal Coat was done last year, a couple of years ago, or at least funded that way, and we had, what, I think it's, yeah, $40,000. I guess, maybe John more for, question for you. So, we have a large project, in this case, the, the Seal Coat, that cost how much?
The, well, the original, the original cost of the Seal Coat was going to be, gosh, about $800,000.
Okay, and we had $40,000 less than that is what it actually cost.
Right.
So, do funds like that stay in the airport?
Reserve.
Reserve or pot, or do, do we say that was money that was not spent, and we take it back into the general reserves, general account, general budget, and, and use that as part of our rollover into next year? Apparently, the answer is, we must leave it someplace over here.
Well, depends on, I assume, I don't know, this was a bonded, part of a bonded, part of a bond, that project, our, our match on that?
The runway 422?
I mean.
I don't think it was. No, it was a general fund transfer, because it was just 10% of the project.
10%.
So, about $88,000 or so was ours.
So it would be able to be used, actually, in any, any way we chose to use it. We could move it out of the airport into a park project, we need to. I, I was just thinking it might have been part of a bond, specific that we wouldn't have been able to do that with.
Yeah, and there was a little bit of strategy to that, because of, not to get too off-track here, was the current reconstruction project, there were a lot of issues with it, some overages that the FAA caused. And so we were kind of holding tight to that $40,000. We meet quarterly with finance and talk about project funds and those sorts of things. So, we had this big project that was unknown. That project actually has worked out very well. And so, but to answer your question, yeah, they, they just kind of stay there. And then, like I said, we meet with finance, and then we come up with a strategy on what to do with those funds, whether it's positive or negative, and then run those through John, and then proceed that way.
Well, I'll say that, you know, it's unfortunate that it, that ended up this way, but hey, we haven't done it for 50 years. What do we know? And I remain strongly committed to this project. I think the community has been calling for it for a long time, and I'm excited to see it move forward.
Well, that Darnold Airport has been, it's been a stepchild of Hutchinson, as long as I can ever, ever, ever remember. And finally, we're making some strides, and some commitments to upgrade and to expand and to offer improved general aviation airport services, and it's long, long overdue. And the bidding process, yeah, it's a little quirky, the way it evolved, but maybe you learn from it. I think we're all learning from it, from that and the, the other one, so, yeah.
I'm, I'm not feeling quite as magnanimous as the rest of you are, apparently. The 30% steel, what, what, how, how much of an impact did that have? Is the steel 90% of the project? Is it 50% of the project? Get my drift?
Yeah. Peter, you want to put that together?
Sure. When, when I put the budget together, end of '16, first part of 2017, I actually contacted the tea hanger manufacturers and said, "For budgetary purposes, you know, you know, we're not asking for a bid. What is a good number for a set of eight tea hangers at this size?" And so, the numbers that they gave me, that's, that's what I submitted as part of my, my budget request for that year. And I, I even added probably about 10 or 12% to that, just, you know, to be, you know, to be on the safe side. So, coming into it here in, in 2018, when we actually put the, the hangers out to bid, that was one of the reasons we decided to do it ourselves, instead of through a contractor, because we knew steel was going to be up a little bit more. So, like I said, the, the overall cost of the tea hangers was $156,000. My original number from 2017 was about 130. So I just did the, the percentage difference. So that's kind of where that number came from. The, we had three bids for the tea hangers themselves, and they were all very close, so.
At the 156.
Between 150, yeah, 150 up to 165 or so.
I'm not disappointed in the same way that I expressed disappointment in regards to the inspections and landlords and that kind of thing, but I am disappointed. I mean, we had a, and, and that's why I asked about the steel. We, we had 141.5,000 increase after you were able to negotiate an 88, almost $89,000 decrease in the, the bid from the, from the, the lowest bidder. And the 141,000 alone is a 30%, 38% overrun. The two together are 62% overrun. And, wow. I, I tend to agree, we need to do the upgrade. But, going from a, a project that was expected to be, I didn't get those numbers written down in front of me, to, to being initially over, it would be, what, 400, no, $550,000 between the purchase and the original bid by Prairie Land Works, up from our, what did we allot? 370,000 is just a tremendous amount, in my opinion. And I, what I don't like, and then, of course, others have commented, and you've recognized, is that we're stuck with, apparently, a $156,000 tea hanger that we'd just simply have to eat it if we didn't proceed with this project. So, it, it, that's why I asked the question. You know, we're, we're potentially eating $80,000 on, on consultant fees and design fees out in Orchard Park. I guess I'd be willing to eat $80,000 or $60,000 or whatever, restocking fee or whatever would, would apply, but it dismays me. I questioned, and I sure like, would like to talk about it next week, then, in terms of when, when there are funds left over, whether they, you know, we're, we're talking about the cuts we've made last year, and that we're going to be looking at making this year most likely. And here's $40,000 that was left over from a project that could have been brought, which I don't think is sweeping in any case. It was money unspent from a project that we budgeted, and we just left set there, and lo and behold, now we have a tremendous cost overrun.
But then if we under-budget, we end up in this situation, where everything's questioned. I mean, there's really no winning. You can't under-budget every project and have funds available.
No, don't expect to. But I think that the monies ought to come back into the general fund, rather than staying, setting out here.
Well, and I think they can, if they're not bond-related. I mean, that's, that's interesting. But I, but I think your point, and, and I think we get that, we've talked about that, that, you know, the way we bid this, we wouldn't do again. And, and the idea of bidding part of the project, and so, I think we learned our lesson on that. We've talked about that, and we accept that, that responsibility.
Well, I agree with Steve. We don't want to set any sort of precedent, just because we're handcuffed to something, or it appears to be so, that we're going to just accept those things. And not to diminish the project, again, I, I also agree with the, some of the others, that I, I think the airport is an asset, and it's been neglected. But it does feel a bit like we're being forced to pull our own teeth here a little bit, just to, to get it done, because we're, we're, we're sitting on it. We're on the thing, versus a building just rotting on the ground in a cardboard box or whatever, which I don't think is acceptable either.
A lot of it, I think, depends on your philosophy, and I subscribe to your philosophy in terms of, of a, a, a project that was, you got a, a below project cost, that those be earmarked into that particular department for, as a contingency. It gets into the general fund, and then it's gone forever. But every department, I believe, needs that reserve contingency basis, and I think this is a great example of that. So, that's my philosophy on it.
I agree that it gives directors incentive to really work those projects, to see that they do come in under budget, if you know that money's going to stay in your department for another project.
Yeah, for another project, yeah.
But the council should be aware of those funds.
Absolutely.
Oh, sure.
Not that it's being withheld. I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, exactly.
But we should be aware of it, and then those parties should be able to defend their reasoning for doing so, if we try and earmark them for something else.
Yeah.
I also might mention that I see this project as fundamentally different from the park building that was proposed at Orchard Park, because we have residents waiting in line to pay rent for those tea hangers. So, we do have the revenue that will support that long-term. So, it's a little bit different than other projects, in my eyes. I wouldn't normally just say, "Hey, we're 100,000 or so over, let's do it anyway," because that is, that's careless, but.
They each have their own return on investment. This one is an actual cash influx. I, I would argue, Tony and others would say, "There's a great return on investment of a different capital than the other," but that's more semantics than anything else.
Let's keep in mind, folks, that, that we budgeted $66,000 for the runway 1331. That's being swept into this, and we're going to have to re-budget it and spend another $66,000, assuming we're going to approve of that, to do the budget project, whether it's 2020 or whether the FAA puts us off to 2022.
Yeah, well aware.
Yeah.
Still support it.
Yeah.
And, and, and of course, I assume that's going to be in your budget proposals going forward. Some, something's got to give. We say yes to one thing, we say no to something else, and that's $66,000, again, like Steve suggested, was earmarked. Something's got to give somewhere, yeah. All right. Any other questions, commentary, direction, motions?
I would move to approve the bid for airport hanger assembly and site work with Prairie Land Works in an amount not to exceed $310,476, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Linda, please call the roll.
Deckent?
No.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Piristay Carvalho?
Yes.
Inskey?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 9B, consider bids for 2019 arterial street maintenance project.
All right. Here comes a patient individual.
That's just the way it works out. That's all right.
Aren't you always last?
Well, sometimes it works out that way.
Did you make someone mad, or no?
Well, he likes to be last, because you get wore down, and then he just. I hope that's not the case. But that's, it is what it is. Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. Last Tuesday, we received bids for the city's, what I call the annual arterial street maintenance project. The map shows the different projects we have. The blue, or, let's go to the orange first. The orange, well, I call it orange, but is the, what our traditional two-inch mill and overlay streets are, which would include Adams Street from 30th down to, I believe, 22nd, and also east 23rd, from Waldron over to Halsted, which is one we had toyed with doing a complete reconstruct, but we're trying to save some money and make that last a little longer, because the last time that one had been done was almost 20 years ago. So it's actually served its purpose, among there's 30, West 30th Avenue, and a little bit on, like, 27th and 25th, for the, the traditional mill and overlay. The other portions of the project would include what I call, it's a 5/8ths ultra-thin bonded asphalt treatment, which we have done similar projects on Avenue A, east of Main Street, back in 2013, I believe, also on 17th Avenue, east of Main Street, which have held up very well. Those, this type of work is best when we have a street that has a, a good base or foundation, and west, or east 30th Avenue to the north there, and the Main Street portion all the way down to Cary Park. Those are in pretty good shape. We don't have a lot of potholes and things like that. There are a few places we have to repair, but in general, it's a wide area that we can cover a lot of ground and get a lot of benefit from this type of, type of work. So, that's kind of our project so far. We had a low bid of $1,167,886.40 from Corneo &amp; Sons of Wichita. This is another one. The project is above the engineer's estimate, which was my, my estimate, but it is below the CIP budget for the project. So, I did call the contractor and discuss with him some of the price differences from what my perceived what the cost would be. And he did say there, there had been some price increases in the asphalt and the rock used for the asphalt, but it's also a little bit smaller project, so, and in some, some of the streets aren't as wide, so they don't get as much production, so that a portion of cost was added, because they can't get the production that they want for those, this, for at least the two-inch mill and overlay. And that's where the primary.
Cost.
Excess cost came from, so. The bids were very close. They're about 30,000 apart. So I do believe we had competitive bids on this project, between Corneo and the second bidder. The completion date for this project is August 30th of this year. I do recommend that council approve the bids and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Corneo &amp; Sons in that amount of $1,167,886.40. But if you have questions, go ahead.
Jeff, the 5/8 inch, what, what do you project the life of that to be?
It's about, oh, seven to 10 years.
Seven to 10.
Plus or minus. The, the projects that were done on Avenue A, east of Main Street, those were completed in 2013. Yeah, and that, so we're doing pretty good. We're, 2019, we're a little, about seven years on it, and it's held up pretty well, as well as 17th, east of Main Street. So, if you take a look at those, drive those sometime, you can kind of judge.
Well, I drive Avenue A regularly, and 17th from time to time. I'm, I'm amazed that it's a 5/8 inch overlay that's holding up as well as it is.
But it's only for those that we have a good base.
But Avenue A is in good shape, yeah.
Right. So I think that those are appropriate locations to get that done. There was actually some other, some of that done, actually, on South K61, too, a number of years ago. And I can't remember the year that one was done.
Anytime we have a street project, I continually ask, and, and maybe I am starting to lose my patience a little bit, where do we stand with the van study that, the, the space van?
That'll be coming up here. I was, well, I might have it in my email now, but, so we are receiving it back very soon, and we're going to be, kind of discuss that internally. And I think some of that information will be given to you as soon as we get it.
As soon as you get, okay, so it still has not been received yet.
During this budget process, I want to use that for, for information to kind of help us all out.
Okay. I think it should be an exceptional tool, and that's why I keep asking.
Nope, that's a good question. I'm glad you did.
Yeah, okay, so, any update on that would be great. All right. Oh, that's what I was going to ask as well. Two bids, and I forget, is, is that, is there anything we can do? Is it, is it around the project timing, whatever, that would entice more bidders? And I know some of that's just their schedules.
Some of it, there's, there's only so many asphalt plants in the near area.
Interesting, okay, that makes sense.
Typically, we only have two on this project.
Is it, in fact, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's usually APAC and Corneo. And there used to be, Corneo has merged with another company, so we used to have potentially three, but.
Okay.
So that's, that's.
And one of these days, we'll probably have one, huh?
Well.
Who knows?
Right. We used to only have one bid on some of these projects, actually, since we've had more interest from Wichita coming this way, so.
As they have grown, they have expanded their territory.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, I'd move to approve the bid from Corneo &amp; Sons LLC in the amount of $1,167,886.40, subject compliance with all legal requirements for the 2019 arterial straight, street maintenance project, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, sure.
Sure. Moved in second. Please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyrostic Carvallo?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Item nine C, consider request to exchange federal funds for twenty-nineteen.
This is, again, Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. Um, this is our yearly, um, agreement with KDOT to exchange federal funds, that we use these funds typically for our arterial or our residential project. Um, this year, the exchange rate is ninety cents on the dollar, which in two thousand and eighteen was seventy-five cents on the dollar. So, um, we're exchanging the four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven dollars and forty-eight cents. With the ninety percent, we, we receive four hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents. And it's, just as an aside, last year, with the twenty-five percent difference, we only received three hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred, plus or minus. So we do, um, get a benefit for being able to use this, these funds on our projects, and it's a little more than last year, so I do recommend that we approve the, this request to exchange federal funds for this year, two thousand and nineteen.
Jeff, will this four thirty-one, four and thirty-one thousand go directly against the one point one that we just talked about?
It, it typically has, that, we have typically used it just for the arterial project. So that is a, a portion of the funding for the, for the arterial, correct?
So the, so that would take it down to about seven hundred thousand, give or take some?
Right.
And we have a CIP budget of one point three million, so that, that difference of six hundred thousand, where will that be going?
Oh, oh, well, it's budgeted for that, but we, in the budget, um, we, we kind of account for the, the, um, federal funds exchange each year.
Okay.
So, so it isn't totally this.
That, that's part of the revenue that.
The revenue.
So that's already been accounted for, anticipated as part of the budgeting process, and, okay, gotcha.
Sorry, it took me a second to let the wheel spin, but.
Sure. Any other questions, staff?
And if not, I will move to approve the request to exchange federal funds.
Second.
It's been moved in second, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyrostic Carvallo?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, next item.
Item ten, report of city officials.
Uh, I can never remember which way I start, but I'll start with Nancy.
Uh, nothing.
Nothing, report, John.
Nothing this morning.
Uh, Steve?
I had something, but it's not there anymore, so nothing.
Jade?
I'm fine, thank you.
Uh, a, a brief aside, if I could, um, I, I, I feel, um, I owe an apology to some of our city staff. Uh, earlier in the meeting, um, there was a gentleman who did, um, uh, call out some of our city, city staff and, and, uh, made some accusations and some accusatory remarks. Uh, I missed the opportunity, I wanna commend Jade for doing that. It's a fine line, when you're chairing the meeting, of allowing individuals to speak and say their mind, but I, I'm, I was remiss, I missed that opportunity to cut, uh, that, uh, gentleman off at that point, and so I wanna apologize to those, uh, that were affected by those comments. It was uncalled for, uh, it was not accurate. Uh, we are, we are very proud of our city staff and the work they do, and they only do what we ask of them to do that. So if there's anything that they're doing, uh, it's only because we've asked them to do so. Uh, I, that was weighing on me, and I wanted to at least say something about that. Um, okay, very fine, um, uh, city manager, anything?
Yeah, I've got several things, uh, first of all, just, uh, that tomorrow, the mayor and I will be meeting with the, uh, the executive director of the NJCAA, kind of our annual sit-down. Um, I have a feeling there'll be some conversation about hotels, um, you'll hear about it if you haven't, but we've had major issues this year, um, with that, and the team staying there, and just a fiasco. So, um, not a whole lot we can do about that, but, but that, you'll hear about that, so. Um, director, uh, we have an offer on the table for a new planning director, and so we'll see what happens there. Um, hopefully, in the next couple of days, we'll be able to finalize that, very excited about that. And then March twenty-sixth is our council budget retreat, and we'll just have an opportunity to kinda go over some of the, uh, year-end stuff, and of course, Councilman Dave Line spoiled my surprise because he was looking at our finances, but, that's all right.
Sorry about that. Where are we doing that, John?
Um.
Have you decided yet, or has it been?
Haven't, yeah, I was just thinking, we did that, I, I, I think we talked about doing it at the water plant again, if that's all right.
Yeah.
That's fine, what time?
Uh, that was at eight AM, yeah.
Okay.
Eight AM, yeah.
And it'd be Angel and I'll be there, talk through some things, and then we've got a couple other, you wanna talk about some budget things? I wanna talk some about some economic development, uh, policies that, that I've been working on, I wanna run by you, and a few other things, so. Um, and Jade, the, the truck, the, the truck route bridge issue on Apple Lane, we haven't forgot about that. We're working through how we, uh, regulate that, we've got issues there on Apple Lane, where we've got a lot of trucks, particularly during harvest, but throughout the year, that are, that are taking that shortcut, and the bridge has a certain limit that these trucks are not allowed. And so what we're looking at now is, is how we, how we post that, and then how we enforce that. And I think it's gonna probably take a little bit of both, and probably a few tickets before people realize that the truck should, what they're doing is just bypassing K sixty-one and Seventeenth and Thirtieth, and, and cutting through there, so, um, during harvest, it's a little more difficult, um, issue there, we'll, we'll have to work through that, so. Um, but anyway, we haven't forgot about that, so.
Chief, I want you to do that with a smile, and make sure they don't get upset with you.
And then the last thing I have, I wanna commend our city attorney for his ability to rival the planning department with his size, the size of his agenda packet. It was, uh, it was roughly forty pages, and so I just wanna commend him for that, his, he's known for brevity, and, uh, he's outside of his box today a little bit, we'll get him back in that box next time, so, but, uh, anyway, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Very good.
John, in reference to your, um, remarks about you and, um, Inskeep meeting with NJCAA.
Yeah.
When can we expect the recommendations from that report, is that next month?
Yeah, probably it was, they were here, what, last week, and she said six weeks or so, yeah, and, so it'll be that time, but.
Beginning of May.
You know, the, the, the issue's gonna be, I mean, this probably isn't gonna get resolved by next year, but, um, there, there's gotta be an effort made that, that, that there are hotels set aside that may not be in Hutchinson, um, for that tournament, um, until we, until we address that, it's.
It's that bad, huh?
It was issues last year, and I know there are issues this year, and it's probably something that, you know, maybe looking forward, should have said, you know, this year, we're gonna have some outside hotels as part of the package. And that's a question I wanna ask the director, is that, is that feasible? I don't know how that, how that's all set up, but, uh, but we did have some major issues this year, so.
Oh, bummer.
Too bad.
Yep, and, and again, that's all I had, Mayor.
Very good, any, uh, other commentary, or all entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And second it?
Second.
Oh, we'll second first.
Third, fourth?
Fourth, yeah.
Uh, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyrostic Carvallo?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes. Let's go get some of that six-point beer we were talking about.